War.
Take your time.
Take your turn.
But will they change the camera?
I used to be off camera.
Oh, well, I can't get it.
That's a bad day. Thank you.
Thanks, Betty. Say, this looks suspiciously familiar, Sean.
Wherever you're comfortable.
I'll throw a few things out of Brian's way. I'm Sean Lentz with Ellison Associates. And we've been, we've got a couple meetings I know where the council over the last couple of years, looking at tax increment district number four, starting to think about, as we got closer to looking at the numbers and realizing that we're almost there, and it looks like this year we're there, that we have enough funds with this year's collection to pay off all the expenses associated with tax increment district number four. With looking at, okay, now we can close the district, and what are some of the issues with closing the districts and opportunities for the city to consider with closing this tax increment district? So we're talking with Betty and Devin and saying, well, maybe we ought to go update the group on this again, getting them thinking about it, because there are some timeline issues that'll come into play as we go through this current calendar year. The suggestion is made to have a special meeting. We put together a presentation. What I'd like to do is go through this, but if any questions come up along the way, if you guys feel free to interrupt me, and we'll take the questions as we do along. Okay?
Fine.
Real briefly, then, what we're going to touch on on page two, just purpose-wise, talking about tax increment district four, looking at the possibility of closing the district, returning that tax base to the general tax base, and some of the financial planning that could go along with that. I think we're going to hit on a number of different issues. Some of them are also going to be related to the current levy limits. So if there's any questions on the levy limits too, as we get to that section, let me know. Well, just as a brief background, wanted to take a second to talk about where tax increment district number four is at right now. And before doing that, I think, as I'm looking at the group again, everyone is probably familiar with tax increment financing, but if we should talk about it real briefly, just as to what it is and how it works, I'm happy to spend a second on that.
Council, what do you think? Everybody knows.
A lot of the audience at home know.
Why don't you take a second, Sean?
Yeah, just take a minute. In 1995, the city created tax increment district number four to promote economic development, industrial development in the city of Hudson. The district meanders through a good chunk of the city, most of it, I guess, I would describe it on the south and east end, is that, I think that's probably how the city would describe it. The district then has been in place since 95. And the way the mechanics work is, at the time we created the district in 95, there was a value calculation of all the property that was within the boundaries of the tax increment district. From that point forward, the value from 1995 continued to pay taxes to all the taxing jurisdictions as you would normally pay taxes. But any new development on the property that was within the boundaries of tax increment district number four, is any new tax revenue on new development is captured by the city and put into a separate fund. And when I say any of the tax revenue from any of the new development, the tax revenue means all of the tax revenue, the city's share, the school district's share, county's share, technical college's share. Now, why does the state allow this to happen? They allow cities to use these sort of districts to promote development or redevelopment within the city, and that's how the city has used it since 1995. And as you'll see, the district has been very successful in terms of promoting development in the city. From a financial standpoint, it's been very successful in terms of developing, collecting the new tax revenue, and using it to pay back debt associated with development in that area. And one last point on that, the development, the, most of the debt was issued in the 1995-96 timeframe, really the first set of infrastructure development out in the St. Croix Business Park area. That was the initial development, initial project cost that the city took on and have used the tax increment district to repay. So a couple other things on the district. The law, as it currently sits, would allow the city to do project costs through 2017. Now, you don't have to go to the full expenditure period, so that an expenditure period is the time where you can incur costs and charge it to this separate TIF fund. The repayment period maximum for the district is 2022. So when we look at closing the district potentially in 2008, and we started it in 1995, you can see that it's substantially in advance of the maximum period that the state would allow. And again, that's another sign of a successful tax increment district. The current valuation that is captured by the TIF, so property valuation that's captured, and then the taxes on that revenue go to the TIF fund, for this current year is a hundred, approximately 190,000, or 190 million, excuse me. And that generates about 2.885 million in tax revenue. And again, you know, I have a quick note below there that the city's share of that, the remaining share is the other taxing jurisdictions. And they were part of the process back in 95 of the city creating the district, and they had a vote to allow the city to do so. So they've been a part of this from the beginning. Now, we've worked with Betty, with Steve Tracy preliminarily, on where do we see fund balance as of the end of '07 for this tax increment district fund? About 5 million. And with the collection, projected collection of 2.885 million in 2008, we're saying that there's just under 8 million in what's revenue available to pay off debt or other costs associated with tax increment district number four. Roughly, that debt number and other costs is about 4.1 million. So with that situation being in place now, it appears that the city's in a position to show that there's more than enough revenues to pay off all the existing debt obligations of the city related to TIF number four. What that means is you have the option of closing the district. Our other discussion on this is, there has not been any discussion or ideas about doing additional projects, to our understanding. Now, if you really felt like you had other projects you wanted to do in that area, there is options to amend the district, add other projects, again, going back to that idea of the 2017 expenditure period. But to our understanding, that has not been a discussion or a plan, actually, in the direction that the city's going to go in. And you'll also, we'll talk a little bit about, the fact that the TIF has grown to the size that it is now, limits your ability to do other tax increment districts in other areas in the city, should the council want to go in that direction. We'll spend a second talking about that. Now, the last thing, and Betty wanted us to make sure we talked a little bit about this, because it is a, it's a little bit of a headache right now in determining 100% the closing of the district, is the city did enter into a contract last year for some projects, and on the bottom of the sheet, you'll see contract payable, some engineering and some other costs, that the construction timeline has kind of gone over into 2008 just due to what? You can't do final paving and otherwise. So we are dealing with ensuring that we can find a way to try to get these costs charged to the tax increment district, and deal with closing the district this year and meeting some of the other timelines that we'll talk about. But we want to do everything we can to make sure these expenses are charged to that fund, because that's the appropriate place for them. Okay. Now, just, what is it?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So if the dollars left is about 3.9 million dollars, the city's share would be 27%? Would that be correct? After we pay off the debt?
Yes. That's, yes. Part of this, and I'll just elaborate on that briefly, when there's a final accounting of the TIF fund done, very likely, and almost assuredly in this case, there'll be a net revenues that are available still after all expenses have been paid off. The process that the state requires the city to go through is really, take that number, look at your last allocation of the tax bill, percentages, 27 for the city's share, and then reallocate those funds out to the taxing jurisdictions on that basis.
Thank you.
So the city get a share, school district get a share, tech college and the county. Okay, any other questions on that?
So really, are you looking at 3.5 million if these are roughly, if the rest is out, or the 2.8?
It's, what will be left over, approximately would be the 7,930,000 less the 4.1 million. That amount then, it will have to do some fine tuning on, but that amount in our example here would be allocated out.
Oh, that's separate from, is that a separate amount from this other 2.8 million?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Sean?
The 2.8 million is a part of the 7,930,000.
Right. So it's almost like a, considered, that's not a bonus, but it's like a?
Yes.
It's like a extra pool of money?
One, a last allocation. Right.
Okay.
Sean, would it be incorrect to think of it another way, that the city's share is approximately 800,000 dollars, and we have 256, the projected remaining expenditures, so we would have the 800 minus the 256?
That's, I think that's correct, although I think we factored into the 4.1 million, I'll have to double check this, it's a good question. I think we factored that cost in from last year, the 256,000, because I think that was part of a broader project, right Betty? So it may already be in this.
Oh, so we wouldn't need to deduct it again?
Correct.
Okay.
Not paid for, why is it paid for either out of that 7,950,000?
And is there, with that pool of money, is, what are the restrictions on spending it? I think that's kind of where people are going here. Are there any restrictions?
None that I'm aware of. Okay, any other questions on that? The process, and I won't spend a lot of time in this, the process for the city to actually close the district, just a couple things of importance. There is a resolution that will need to be approved, and we need to notify the state of our actions. The key to this, though, is May 15. If we notify the state before May 15, the impact of the tax base, that 190 million, will be, it will impact your budget 2008 for taxes collected in 2009. If we notify the state on or after May 15, you'll collect another year's worth of increment, and then it'll be 2010 year that you'll actually see the impact of the TIF coming back to your general tax base. Same with the school district, the county, and the tech college. So part of the other reason we wanted to get this on for discussion is, there's a lot of things going on with the city, you have an election year, many things going on with April activities. That May 15 date comes upon us very quickly, and so we wanted to try to give as much time as possible to get this out there, get you guys thinking about where you'd like to go with it, and really understanding the processes as best we can.
Well, the other point is, we need the money now, especially with the restrictions we're getting from Madison. As soon as we can.
Right. And we'll talk, we'll talk a little bit about the levy limit rules as it pertains to this. The other part is, if we go another year, as an example, we won't know the rules yet. We were in the dark until October 29th, October 30th this year, as to what the rules would be for right now. And if we go out another year, we will be in the dark as to what opportunities are there for the city regarding closing the district.
Called the fear of the unknown.
Well, Sean, we also would not be able to open up the tax district that we've been talking about for downtown until 2009 instead of 2008.
Right.
Which would stop the projected building.
And actually, leading into that, on page five, the point's been put out there now, but I'll just mention it real briefly again. TIF number four encompasses just over 12% of the city of Hudson's tax base right now. The state will not allow you to add property to an existing district or create a new district if you have tax increment districts that encompass more than 12% of the city. That's the case that Hudson's in right now. Now, the test for calculating a new district and being able to create a district, as soon as you take action closing this existing district, you will have the ability to create a new one immediately. So that question's come up before, that, well, does it take a year before it gets back on the tax roll? What's the date? As soon as you pass a resolution closing four, you would be in a position to be able to create a new district. Any other questions on that? Well, let's talk for a second about the implications of levy limits that the city is currently under as it relates to tax increment districts. The first set of levy limit rules did not allow cities to take as an opportunity a closing of the district to assist in your budgets, is basically what it was. And through a lot of efforts in educating the legislators, we let them know that, over the years, communities have used tax increment districts to try to assist in controlling expenses, controlling tax impact on taxpayers. And what the levy limits were doing is really not allowing that to happen at all, under the first set that you recovered under. So what they, through some discussions, what they've settled on is, in the year that a district closes, the city can use 50% of the final increment value to assist in handling expenses of the city, and i.e. being able to raise your levy limit. And the way the logistics of that work is, in the middle of the page, you've got a district, again, of 190 million right now. 50% of that would be 95 million. If we take that 95 million and divide it by the total value of the city of Hudson, equalized value, 1,565, that's about just over 6%. So because you were closing the district for, if we do it in '08 before May 15 for next year, for 2009, you would have the 6.08 plus net new construction or a minimum of 2% for a total of about 8% in terms of your levy limits going into next year. So does that make sense to everybody? Prior to the change, now, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, you would have no ability to do the 6.8%, just the 2%.
This is for 2009 budget?
2009. Right. Now, what's available for 2010, we don't know. Because again, the levy limits expire, sunset after this next budget's year, and we would know going forward what the game would be at that time, what the rules would be. Okay, now, before going on to where we see some options for the city, just real briefly, where have you been from a total levy standpoint and a mill rate standpoint over the last couple of years? And this is on page seven and eight. Page number seven, you can see the growth in the city's total levy. This is total levy, not including the TIF levy, so that 2.8 million isn't in here. This is the levy for operations of the city. Over this period of time, for 2008, 5.7 million, it's probably a number you're familiar with, just finishing up relatively recently, the budget process. Now, if we look at the mill rate on the next page, you will see that the trend has generally been in the other direction, and that's primarily because the tax base, these are equalized mill rates, equalized, based on equalized value. Generally, the tax base of the city has grown faster than the total expenses of the city. So you can see, that's compressed your mill rate from just under six mills in 2001, you're at about 4.18 equalized mills with the most recent budget that you just completed. Okay, any questions on that? Okay. The next slide then, really, I think is the crux of the impact if the TIF is closed prior to May 15 of this year. We've made a couple assumptions, and this is on the bottom of the page. The assumptions are that the city uses the entire projected 8.08% to deal with ongoing operational expenses of the city, so you build it into your budget and levy it. At this time, we've not added any new additional debt, and we've done a, some increases in the tax base of the city based on past growth, and we may want to look at this number again. We've taken past growth discounted at 50%. We could talk about whether the 50% is enough, or maybe we should do more, but that is built into this analysis as well. Two things we'd see happening with those assumptions. One, the total levy for the city would go to about 6.1 million with that 8.08% increase in operations, operation expenses. The mill rate, though, would go from 4.18 to 3.74. And again, the reason is, is that under this scenario, you're not using, you're increasing your levy, but it's discounted by that 50% that the rules from the state are, and we're not adding any new debt in. What other expenses would the state allow you to have that could bring you back up to that 4.18? So let's say that the city said, we want to stay at 4.18. That was going to be a policy decision. The only expense under levy limit rules that you can add and stay within the levy limit regulations would be additional debt levy. And we just did a rough math calculation, your debt levy could be increased approximately 720,000 using these assumptions, and you'd still be at 4.18 for equalized mill rate. So does that make sense, or should we talk about that again?
One more number, 720,000 in debt?
In debt service.
Debt service.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. So principal and interest payments, additional principal and interest payments.
So what debt roughly would that generate, depending on the rate?
Yeah, we ran, we've been working on this internally, trying to figure out what would this mean. And one of the scenarios that we looked at was, if the city did regularly schedule debt issues, including this year, about 2 million a year?
Yep.
And you also did a one-time larger issue, and we ranged it from 5 million up to, I think, about 12 million. Could we, could we do that within that 4.18 number? And the answer was yes.
Okay.
There would be ways to structure your debt, whether it was 2 million a year, regular, ongoing city-type capital expenses, and a one-time larger issue related to public safety. I know that's been a project that have been out there. It was in that range. It kind of comes back to how quickly you repay your debt, too.
But if we don't add any debt, additional debt service, then actually, across the board, we would see a tax decrease.
Correct. Correct. So if you're a homeowner, if that mill rate drops from 4.18 to 3.74, then you're paying less on the value of your home because that tax rate has dropped down. Really, what you're doing is you're just spreading expenses over a larger tax base because the TIF's closed.
So one more time, just to be clear, assuming this, the assumptions here, we could increase the debt levy by 2 million a year, plus we could have a one-time debt expenditure up to 12 million a year and not affect the mill rate?
Yes, I mean, let me state it one more time. The 2 million a year was borrowings of 2 million a year, so the debt service is going to be less than that.
Okay.
We paid those 2 million a year issues out over a 10-year period.
Correct.
And then the larger issue, again, ranging from 5 million to 12 million, we did a couple different examples, that was paid out over 20 million, given that probably the project be a longer useful life. But to answer your question, yes, that would stay below, at or below the 4.18 that you're currently at.
Okay, so we could bond for projects up to like, whatever is a million and a half, and then a one-time bond, if you will, for up to 12 million?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, given the assumptions.
Given the assumptions here, and not increase the mill rate, that's.
But there's no restrictions on your regular budget versus your capital projects?
The regular budget, this analysis assumes we do, we max out on what the state will allow for our regular budget. That's that 8.08%. Then on top of that, the debt part of it is not subject to levy limits, so that's where you'd have some flexibility in deciding, do you go up to the 4.18? Do you do something?
Well, I wanted to make that clear, because it's a pretty distinctive situation that we have, especially in the situation that we are on manpower. You know, capital projects, you can build anything you want, but you can't put manpower in it. It's buildings or whatever, so if we can increase our regular budget, that's a real plus for our situation today.
Yeah, and we talked a little bit, and Betty, if you wanted to add something to this, the 8.08, given these assumptions, was about 350,000, is roughly what we talked about. So, you know, I guess something to always consider is, if you're doing a 12 million dollar facility, how much extra operating costs are you going to have to deal with because of that? Because that 350,000, that is, that would be a set number. That we wouldn't be able to increase above that number because of the state levy limits.
Well, and I think we shouldn't lose sight of the fact that if we want Hudson to grow in a controlled way, a lower tax base would be very attractive to people wanting to settle here. And that would be a way to get new revenue by having new people, people buy all the homes that are for sale in Hudson attracted by our lower tax base.
Well, I think we're in an unusual stage in city government today because of the restrictions, and we're going to have to put some real precise priorities on how we move forward on capital project versus manpower.
Well, with this page nine in mind, in talking with Betty, we really said, let's just put three different approaches, looking at it from the executive level, that the council might want to consider. Again, all this assumes that we close that district before May 15. And option number one is simply that we will drop the mill rate as much as possible, based on adding the tax increment district tax base back. So under that scenario, you may or may not use that 8.08. On the previous page, you saw that if you do, the mill rate would go down to about 3.74 under those, with those assumptions. You don't even have to do that, that's just an option that's available to the city under the levy limit rules. One other thing to consider, though, with that approach, is if you have some of these larger capital projects that are a reality and that you really are going to have to deal with, what'll happen is you're going to probably end up with a roller coaster effect, that you're at 4.18 now, you go down, but if those projects are a goal, you're going to have to go back up. And I think there can be some frustration from the general taxpayer in that, well, what the heck happened here? Why did that happen? Why did it go down? And there usually is a feeling, if you can keep it somewhat steady and manage, that's usually accepted pretty well.
And if you look at our past history, we've been horizontal, and there's not been any dips and rises that are wild. It's been pretty horizontal, and you've helped us with that.
Yeah, generally, the mill rate has been going down, so you guys have managed that. I know that people's values are what they really pay taxes on, but the mill rate from what the city is doing collectively, you can see that that's gone down over the years. Option two would be an approach saying, from a policy standpoint, we're going to have the TIF closed, and we'd like to try to maintain our current mill rate, because we think this is a good level to be at. So with this approach, you're going to, you're not going to have any, what I guess I would call, direct tax relief from closing the TIF, but you do have some indirect, because if you're adding these new capital projects or infrastructure projects, and there is no increase from a mill rate standpoint to the taxpayer, certainly, the citizens of the city are benefiting from that, because you've managed the tax increment district closing, and you've got these new projects, and you're staying basically at the same level. And I think this approach, too, if you hold all other assumptions equal, you probably can target repayment of debt faster, but part of that analysis will really depend on where you end up with some of the final project costs, for the capital project costs that you see coming up for the city in the coming years. Okay? And the third option is really just more, it's kind of a hybrid of the first two, where the council looks at this and says, we want to, we want to target two goals. We do want to take advantage of this situation with the tax base coming back. We do want to take advantage of this situation with the tax base coming back, to deal with some of our capital projects that are coming up, but we'd also like to see the mill rate, instead of being 4.18, be something lower than that." So it'd be a combination of trying to achieve two goals with a policy strategy going forward.
There isn't any reason, I understand the mill rate, you know, decreasing, increasing, but there isn't any reason why those capital projects would have to be funded the first year. We don't lose that opportunity in the second year, do we?
It's, it is a situation where the, the operations side, you either take it, or it's gone. So that 8.08, if you don't build that into your budget next year, it's a one-time opportunity.
On the operations.
On the operations side. On the debt side, you're correct, there, that's not gone. You have the opportunity to add debt to the tax base, because debt is outside of the levy limits.
Sean, could you just address for a second, the impact that the creation of a new TID district, as we've discussed, would have on these options?
No, it should be no impact.
Right, zero?
Yep.
Okay.
No impact.
So, Sean, what, what option would be more favorable, keeps it consistent?
I, I would say two or three would be, either if you, if you really felt a 4.18 level was appropriate, then you're looking at two. If you do want to, if you felt like, well, I'd rather see that be 4.1 or 4.0, then three. But two or three, to answer your question.
But if we wanted to build a public safety building, for example, we need the 8.8 to be operational.
Correct. Absolutely, yep.
Seems like you have more flexibility in option number three.
Yeah, because in option two, you have to, you have to buy a 12 million dollar building.
Well, and then you can't staff it after that.
So, I can see that, too. Somewhere in option three is where it'll end up.
This gives you some visibility on future project decisions, I'd say.
In one area that Betty and I talked a little bit about in trying to, and this is on page 11, maybe assist the council going forward, going back to, and Mary, I think you might be the only one on the group here that was a part of this back in 97, I'm going by my memory, which isn't always 100%, but we did, at that time, we did a five-year financial plan, with the goal of really looking at the challenges that the city was facing, from additional infrastructure needs, dealing with ongoing operational challenges, operational expense challenges, and we put that all together, going through a series of workshops, to develop a five-year financial management plan. It might be something that the city would want to consider, again, given the opportunity with the TIF closing, but also, given the challenges we just talked about on the other page, you're still going to have operational issues when you're putting new, new, new assets in the city, new buildings, a public safety building potentially, as a, as an example. You're still going to have the operational challenges, given the levy limits, and you're also going to want to consider economic development opportunities that may be coming forward for the city, or redevelopment opportunities in the near future. So I think it may be something to talk about, again, going through that process. It is time-consuming for the council, we've got a number of workshops that would be a part of that, but it might be something that we'd want to refresh and bring back, and go through again.
Well, I think it goes back to the reasons we had those workshops, was to eliminate the yo-yo situation that was happening. Now, because of the economic instability today, we don't want to, one year, drop our taxes, and then, the next year, accelerate them, because the people who are paying the bill on taxes want to have some future to, to pay in that particular bill. And if we surprise them by this yo-yos approach, it's not good for any of us, including the people sitting at this table. So I think that was worthwhile, it put us in a position of what I call, horizontal taxes, and I think it's been very beneficial. I think we should try and do that again.
Yeah, over that time, too, another thing that, I think that helped get us on the right track going forward, is the city's bond rating. We have Moody's Investor Service come in, has gone from an A3 to an A1, and the city's a strong A1 at this point. So I think, there's been a lot of things that have trended in the right direction, really, since, the tax increment districts are part of that, too. I mean, the success of it, the growth of the tax base has played a part in the financial situation of the city.
I'd be in favor of those workshops.
We'll go back to page three, that's very, up at the beginning. Those expenditures for 208, 2008, that 161 and 80 in the 15, that would come out of the, the tax district, not come out of the city funds, but come out of the general funds for both the city, that we've collected for the other municipalities?
That's what, that's what we're targeting. The one, the issue, the problem we're struggling with is, we, we're saying, May 15 is our date. And can we pay something from a fund that's closed? That's, that's the issue. How can we find a way to make that work? Because after May 15, we have, we no longer have a TIF, it's closed at that time.
Can't we prepay any of it?
I, I think we can. That's what we're, we're trying to figure out, get in a, a rock-solid opinion, that can we prepay these groups and say, "Listen, the work's not done yet, but we've got these timelines we've got to fit into, so we're going to pay you in advance." We're exploring whether that solution will...
Or holding an escrow account, or...
We're, we're trying to see if any of those options, exactly. Because it is a TIF expense, it was something you entered into last year, so we intended to do it as a TIF expense. I don't think there would be any problems from any of the parties, you know, the other tax jurisdictions who are a part of all this, with the approach. It's, we've got to find a way to make sure we're within the rules from the state.
That way, we wouldn't have to take it out of our share.
Exactly.
Exactly. Make the multiples pay, rather than just...
Exactly, which is the right way to do it, I think.
It was, there's no question that that is a TIF-eligible expense. It was a part of the plan, it was always envisioned to be a TIF-eligible expense.
Thank you.
Just summarizing that page, so overall, we could have an 8.08% increase in operating expenses, ongoing, and then from page three, there would be a closing benefit back to the city of $795,000, or $795,000, is that?
You know, I guess I didn't have that map, Brian, could you check that real quick? But I think if you've done the, if you took the 27% times the difference of the 7.9 million and the 4.1, that would be, that's how I would come up with that number.
I was just looking at, right here, you say, oh, that's 2,000, the numbers are very similar, I see.
Just over a million dollars.
Yeah. Okay. And again, we, we're very confident at this point, that the city, with this year's collection, will have enough to pay the expenses. That 4.1 million dollar number, we've got to really get into that to find out if that's, we're pretty confident that it's right in that ballpark. We want to get the exact numbers, and we'll, we'll get some assistance from, from Steve on that as well.
Well, you know what's great about this, Sean, for 2009, is that we get this influx of money. The important thing is what's going to happen the following year in Madison, because if they restrict us, again, to a 2%, we've added one year of great, fantastic monies, and then the following year, we go down. So it's going to be a yo-yo from, from one year versus the other.
Okay, maybe I'm not understanding. I thought if we went up the 8.08% this year, that became the new base for next year? Or are you saying we lose that 6%?
It all depends what they do in Madison, is my understanding.
You would go to the 8.8, it would become part of your base, but if the, the state says, everything will be back on the board for discussion. So if they say 2% from that number, then that's all it'll be. If they say no increases, then it'll be from, but you're, I think you're correct, and then the 8.8 would be built into your previous year base.
So it becomes the new base?
Right.
Well, the base used to be a three-year rolling average. It is not any longer.
It's, I think, it was 3.86 this year, 2% next year, and then going forward, it's anybody's guess.
Okay.
Sean, when would this approximate million dollars be available, if the district is closed this year?
Yeah, there'd be two things. One, you have to collect probably the whole year's worth of taxes, which would be later this year, because that, that's part built into these numbers. And secondly, you'd want to do your final accounting, and then that would justify the final checks that you would cut to all the tax jurisdictions. So I'd say, at the soonest, the latter part of this year.
Okay.
So it'd be in 2009 budget, though, wouldn't it?
No, it'd be available, like, October?
Well, let's see, you get your...
You get a check, basically, the city pays itself and takes it out of that one fund that's restricted and unrestricts those funds.
Okay.
So that would be towards all of them here.
This is like the bonus check, if you will, because there's a fund that's got almost $8 million in it, and we'll, and after you pay off the principal, there's roughly $3.5 million left. That roughly million dollars will be a check given to the city later on this year. Doesn't, this has nothing to do with 2009.
But I think the, the one, I think everybody would share this, a significant concern I'd have, is if you start building that revenue into the operations of the city, and then the mayor, like the mayor said, the next year's 2%, you're in a, you're in a big hole. So, you're, you're going to have to make a decision, what is the best use of that money?
No, I understand that.
But operational expenses, I think, would be not where you want to go with it, because who knows where the levy limits are going to go forward.
Right, I just want to make clear that, at some point later on this year, the city's going to get a check in somewhere, in the neighborhood of a million dollars. The school district will get one, the tech colleges will get one, et cetera.
Well, after you receive that check, it's an important factor inside if you're going to reduce the existing budget, or are you going to wait till the following year to do that? You know, you have a windfall, and you know...
Right, I, I think part of the, the planning, if, if the city were to go forward with that, is you put that on the table for discussion. Are we going to earmark these monies for, well, we want to look at, where's your fund out? Are we at the right levels? Does it need to go there? Look at capital needs of the city, can some of the money be used in that area? But I think all those things would be fleshed out.
What a great advantage in comparison to what we've been subjected to in the last three, four years. It's fantastic.
Nice change.
Well, last, just, last page 12, and then, if there's any other questions, we have to answer those, but we've got that middle of May date being the key, so you had a council meeting prior to that date, you had to close the district, you need to approve it, and the state needs to be notified prior to May 15. Those are the, the key dates. So I think we need some direction going forward, as to option two, option three, where would we like to see the, the city be, as we go into 2009 and beyond. We have some time to, to consider that, but the one area, if, if, as an example, if none of the large capital projects that potentially could be out there, public safety, otherwise, are not going to hit the, the tax roll in '09, let's say that's another A route, we're going to need to develop a strategy for this year's debt issue, which is going to be a million and a half, 2 million, 2 million. And then, there's also a, a debt issue with a balloon payment, and we're going to need to make some decisions as to how we deal with those. Part of that, from our standpoint, comes from where you guys want to see us end up at the end of the day. So if you say, "Well, we want to be at the 4.18," we'll make sure we structure the debt, so that's where we end up. If we want to do something like option three in between, we'll set the debt up to make sure we get to that area. So I think those will be ongoing questions that we'll have to talk about going forward.
Well, if we took option three and discussed that today, and then said, "Hey, we want to go somewhere between 4.18 and 3.74," that would give us some flexibility on both, both ends. And, you know, I realize, we're not, some of us are not going to be here, but we also have some people that are going to be here in the audience, they've been listening to this presentation as well, and chances are, maybe we should have a meeting with, with ourselves and the potential people that are going to be taking our seats, to say, collectively, are we moving in this particular direction? That is, option three, with the option also of somewhere between the 4.18 and the 3.74, so that we can make decisions and move forward until April, and then suddenly, you've got a new group, and they say, "Hey, wait a minute, let's take a better approach on this, and end up some other way." Maybe we should have that meeting, have them be part of the unofficial decision, so that when they get into these seats, they're aware of the approach and can continue on that particular path. Does that seem good for, in the audience? Otherwise, I think it could be, it could be a mess.
Well, yeah, we could all decide on one thing now, and then aft, after the election, change direction, throwing him behind the eight ball.
And we've done that before.
Don't want to do it again, we can avoid it. So we should have that meeting fairly soon.
Yeah, I think if the council's agreeable to that, we should, we should schedule something like that in the very, very near future, so that we can get input from the people who are going to be sitting some of our chairs. That seem like a good approach?
Do you need a motion, or...
Need a motion on that?
I think you can just say, "Schedule a meeting."
Yeah, let's just...
More motion.
She's easy tonight.
Yeah.
Let's just schedule a meeting.
Well, let's move in that direction. Nice presentation. I think, again, it's an important factor that we move on in planning that you did back in 1997 for all of us, so that we don't get into the, what I call, the yo-yo impact. Yes?
Can I add a few things as...
Absolutely.
Okay. Just a couple of things that I noticed, the council, the wheels were turning, and I picked up on it. Just if you were to, to look at this without having the tax increment district closing, we have a 2% levy limit next year, that would create $86,000 of additional taxes next year. Just so you keep that in your mind, $86,000 would maybe cover our fuel costs, additional fuel costs, and some contractual problems that we're having. So, keep it in that mind, with closing the TID district, we get about another $270,000 in tax revenue, what we can use for operations. I saw the $350,000 being brought up for operations of maybe a new building, but keep in mind that we are at 2007 levels right now in our 2008 budget. So, keep it in mind that $350,000 is not going to be totally available for new operations, unless we do some major cutting in the city. The other thing that I think is really important is, you know, Sean talks about structuring the debt. We have gone into a $2 million, we used to be at a 1 million or 2 million every other year, we've gone into a $2 million issue every year at this point. And with that destruction of the debt, he talks about paying that over the 10-year period, and we'll pay 150,000 this year in principal, and another issue is paying 50,000 in principal, and that gets very complicated, and that's why I think this is really important, that we get him involved with doing the workshops and doing some financial planning for the city, because of the big changes that are going on. So those are the only two things that I wanted to add. Also, Paul, that was great, saying we have an estimated 3.4 million to divide. We don't really have the exact figures yet, so I don't want you to think we've got a million, 15,000, because we do have to defuse those bonds and come up with how much we have to pay for those outstanding issues, so. Other than that, that's all I wanted to add. Sean's always done a great job, Brian, too, they've always done a great job, even Steve Tracy here.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other questions or comments? How about anyone from the audience? Are we moving in the right direction, in your opinion? I see you're a little lobbing there, a lot of heads, a lot of heads. Okay, anything else? If not...
Move to adjourn.
What do you want us to do, meet?
Do you want to check Sean's availability?
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you coordinate that?
Everybody, at that.
As soon as possible for that first one, with the people who are running for office.
Need a second on the adjournment.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.